Okay, now the agenda. Review and approval of the minutes of March 9th, 2023. Minutes. Officers. Six regional impact vote. Applications and public hearings. Planting board of 23. That 010 of the site plan review. Field land, field zone land consultants, DOLC. On behalf of the workforce and services designated in application for a site plan review. To construct a commercial landscaping facility and attach mobile family housing. Undeveloped land located at the junction of West Muddy Road and West Street. And that has been postponed until our April 27. Next, under discussions and other business preliminary conceptual consultation. Greg Johnson on mixed restaurant property. That has been withdrawn by the applicant. Alternate member application, Michael. Member, Sengir.
He says Sengir.
Stunji.
Stunji?
Stunji.
Oh, Stunji, okay. Thank you. Sorry. And the site plan review applications, planning workshop, and any other business as may be required. And, okay, so, minutes of March 9th, 23. Does anyone have any operations or anything like this on that? Nothing major. Just put it away. Just wanted to clarify, I was on page four. And the first sentence says, Lane asked about the deed restriction on the airport property. We should specify that that is something, plain view, they call it.
Yeah.
It's a, we'll just specify plain view property. Anybody else have anything else on those minutes? If not, motion to approve. Amendment?
Some of them.
Motion by Victoria to approve as amended, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Richard Lane, if there are any further discussion. Who's there in this thing, hi?
Hi.
Both? Okay, number both. Now, collection of officers. We have the chairman and vice chairman. Do we have any volunteers for that position?
I have the nomination. These kids are ready.
Uh, nobody, no volunteers, like, either visiting vice chairman or chairman. And the nomination is in our.
You can't get off the hook. I nominate Scott Self as chair. And in the spirit of this, um, round. You can't stop. Um, we have this, this second generation thing going on, but I think it's kind of wonderful. And in that spirit, I'd like to nominate Richard Lane as vice chair. Given the fact that his father served as selectman for many years and as planning board for many years.
Yeah, he did.
He did.
So we have a recommendation of myself, Scott Self as chair and Richard Lane as vice chair. Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Second by White, here it is. Discussion. Never liked being chairman of the board or any of the board, really, because the, the only reason I don't mind doing it, I'll do it. But the reason is that you can't fully participate in the meeting. Too busy running the meeting, you can participate in maybe 50%, 75% sometimes. Can't do the full consultation. What, kind of, you can ask the volunteers if, uh, want to take over. He hasn't been second, we have, we have a patient on the floor there. I'm patient, so I think he's got it into the further discussion.
Which makes you perfect for the job.
No, that's, that's, thank you. Well, all those in favor, indicate that saying hi.
Hi.
Okay, settled. Now, before we start, regular agenda. Mike, Adam, and feel, feel.
What I probably always told me, Scott, better be careful what you get good at, and even more careful when you join.
Let me write that down. You two have something for us before we even go on, can I?
Yeah, I think, I think I'll present the beat of it and go ahead with it. I butchered it. So if you remember, I came by and I presented that, which is some parts you guys. Did you handle that amendment to me to some degree? Uh, nothing major. First, one more, that portion of this is that some of the comments from the butters was like, had concerns of the light. Here's the thing, over the lake, our goal is to use some of the funds in this project to amend the lights so that they could do conform with our regulations and downwards. Uh, but on that same topic, though, we are also in the process of installing those lights on the side of this structure. Of course, we had concerns, uh, that primarily on the architectural plans. They were depicted as proposals to, to include, but not presented as such. Things that should be there. Some of the, you know, actual contractors, if they could do it, they could do it for both uses. It will be the same feature for the new, what is this instructor, where is the photo instructor, same style and downwards. There was a couple of questions about the voting sensor or not voting sensor. I still think we're gonna go with the idea of a not voting sensor. Should it be shining down with, but not shining ever? Uh, yeah, that's, that's kind of the gist of this. Um, that's had the majority of the vote, but this one's improved the board of this topic, if there are any concerns. Is this, is that?
Those lights are on photo cell?
Yes. Another time, keep on photos. Yeah, not, not.
LED?
Yes. That's exactly.
Well, it can run all night.
What is photo cell? What is photo cell?
Photo cell is, it's a, it's like a on off switch. And during daylight, it's off. And as soon as, as soon as it gets dark enough, the switch closes and turns the light on. As soon as it's light enough, it opens and turns the light off.
You can't manually turn it on correctly, is this my understanding of that?
Not usually with a photo cell. Unless you have a switch above.
Do it anyway you want.
That's, that's.
Yeah, good thunderstorms like that, it's very silent, will they come on?
Yeah, if it gets real dark, yes, it will.
That makes sense.
You can set it, so. You get a lighting that will shut them off. So that's it, just the lighting, just the change.
That's all, that's all.
Same place you said on the existing building that the original ones are on.
Yeah, so the current building, yeah, where it goes off. We're gonna pull quote on that soon, you guys.
Thank you for taking your time to present that to us.
What makes you guys say that about that? Is people, for any questions?
Yeah, we blame it on you anyway. Mr. Jett, would you have any, oh, you're just backing him up, okay, we gave him a hard time.
We're giving it other than the light, so we're giving it to you.
Okay. All right then. Get on with our agenda, which is, uh, regional impact vote. Actually, there's nothing on here. So, no regional impact vote is required. So, that brings, brings us to alternate member. And Michael Skudjuro, right? I'm gonna mess that up every single time.
And it's quite a standard.
Thank you, okay. I'm gonna write that down here for you.
Scott, Michael Hess.
Great, uh, anything to do in the hand, you know, presentations or, you know, I read that we'll collect, generally written about.
Uh, like, not too much, uh, so, I have that for science and. I haven't really been working through too much since that graphic, it's a little years ago. Actually, when the, uh, it was facing the best industry, uh, I was a student back there. So I've got, I've got a bit of that for, uh, last year. Other than that, uh, I grew up in the, around the street, not, it's around the street. Born for on Southeast Mass Street six, moved to Swansea, uh, in 2016.
Right. And you're incorrect, didn't be on the plan anymore.
I heard if you.
Okay. Any questions? If not, we need a motion to nominate the.
Stunji, oh, so, I nominate.
Second. Second being. For our board, and, okay. Okay, my plan by Victoria, second by Brandon.
Hi.
I give a lot of people laughing this morning.
Yes, please.
And you can count all of them, right?
It's gone, I don't know, George is, George, I can see if he has.
George, are you here for your property?
Um, no. Your son, your son have anything?
Son?
No.
Who was that? Oh, nobody, nobody was, there was a preliminary discussion, conceptual discussion with the planning board, that was, uh, by Greg Johnson, that was, uh, just on the study.
I was around.
What? Wait. See, we have, uh, next time you can have site, uh, site plan review regulation. We've been working on this for quite a while and it's, you know, we're done and out of the way. Wall of comments.
I've got one that, that I've already given to the, it's on page seven. Number three, that, that was actually a new law on that, that read it out.
What are you doing?
Probably going to a different, uh.
Uh, this, the board may apply to the slightly for an extension act to exceed it in additional 90 days before acting to approve. Conditional approval or disapproval on an application.
7.03.
Have the original one here.
Is that he's going on the original?
He's going on the original.
A real original one?
The real original.
Okay, I have a copy.
Everybody's going off the original one.
Okay, so.
7.03.
Just, not to confuse everyone, I've got a draft that, remember, we were working on it before. And we went through it and reorganized, altering, Sarah and I, and then we discussed it with the board stuff, and that's a copy of that draft, so I was going on that. That's why I'm, okay, let me get on the other page. And the, just go through this.
Okay. Great, that was.
It's, it's, yeah, this one that we've just got, like, does it last me?
That large one, uh, we moved.
Nope, yeah, right here.
Oh, so.
This is it, right? Something in this paragraph, I don't. So that's, yeah. Yeah, another three, which part?
Do you wanna go through this cor-? Excuse me. Scott, do we wanna go through this chronology?
Would you go pay my baby? Thanks, just to run through it yours and you can't really, you shouldn't really jump around on that. Start from the beginning now. Four here. Renumber everything before now. In the old, just to correct everyone's memory before they're going through it. In the old, like, on page number five, it started on 701. Everything else was section from Romanium World and all that type of stuff. And then on page number five, it started on 701. And it just was mixed and mashed. That renumbering. See in the draft, there are.
Yeah, what would you prefer work off of? Draft or what?
What does everything across the is draft?
Well, is that one of the topics for draft or is that the original?
This is what was given, now, a couple of meetings, two or three meetings ago.
Yeah, that's all. Say what's going down, go to the. Is it page, okay, go to page five and see if it begins. Yeah, page five. It does begin with 701, just five months here.
Okay.
We use them both in.
Yeah, 701.
So you. See, I can move it a little bit here. Okay, so. Turning right off, uh, page one. Do you have anything? Do, perfect, we already have a.
Yes. Just a thought that we revisit the master plan and the statement of principles to coincide with what we, what our purpose is here. Compatibility to the surrounding neighborhood is the key, the key item, um, in the, um, master plan. And, you know, if we're, if our job is to, part of our job is to look at a master plan and try and keep the town in that, um.
Direction.
Direction or whatever, you know, and, and yet we're, we're not doing that, and we have a conflict. I'm just, just wondering whether or not we need to change something to make it a little more compatible with our master plan. Under the purpose.
Are you saying, if you adding in some wording to?
Yeah, it's, well, in the master plan, it, it speaks to, um, our purpose being, and looking at things to be compatible with the neighborhood and existing surroundings. And going back to the, uh, plain view, or however we wanna look at it up at the airport. That doesn't really fit into the master plan. I know it's allowed by zoning, et cetera. That's something that we maybe want to look at, you know, uh, somehow amending that, but, you know, how do we, how do we justify? Or how can we make things a little more compatible with our master plan and the purpose?
So, yeah, we're on the front of the airport. Definitely, we all know that it did not fit into that neighborhood. One of the reasons I didn't object more to that is because when the courts looked at that from the ZBA, it was first challenged from the ZBA. Courts looked at it and they looked at an entire business zone, not just an area up there. So that's how they saw it. Who knows if the Midland corporate sees that, but they saw it, the entire business zone, that, oh yeah, that's compatible. Down here, we have a middle business zone and, you know, for the business on the town, we have stuff like that, so that's how they saw it. So, that's the problem. We don't know how the courts are ever gonna go.
No, just.
And we, we do have, you know, aesthetics and so on, you know, it's like, like one of the regulations.
True.
And we do try and stick to them, but that being decided previously by the court, we aren't, we weren't gonna win that. In my opinion, it would never.
There's something I still don't understand about the decision that the court made. I don't understand why. It, I, I understand that it was a two to two decision, but the fifth justice had recused because she is an employee of the firm that represents Avenue Development. Now, it would seem to me that I, in my heart and soul, I feel that it was an error that they didn't have a substitute for her in a case like that, that meant enough to a community that they took it to the Supreme Court. And I don't know who to approach about that, and it's too late, I understand, to do anything about it now. But things like that happen. And in, in a master, having a master plan, the reason you have it is to plan for the best and most appropriate future development of your community. And we all know that that really was not the best and most appropriate use of that small piece of land by the airport, business zone or not. There were other businesses that would have been much more appropriate in that place. And so, I understand what, uh, Richard is saying, because that's what a master plan is for, is to help us plan for the best and most appropriate use of our land and our, and for the future of our community. I mean, there was a nice big wide spot down by Gamarlo's too. But was it the best use of it, right on a state highway to put eight, what is it, eight, two apartments, right there? For the future of our community? I personally don't think so, but I'm, I mean, this is why we have a master plan. A master plan means that it's the master of the plan.
Direction of the community.
Yeah.
In, in oncoming years, but it mainly used, it's supposed to be, and it was mainly used by the planning board to enact zoning regulations. That's supposed to set the, the stage for planning work coming up of how our guidance to the town now, how we want to develop the building in town, what's allowed here, what's allowed there, what it can allow, and so on and so forth. But that's why it's pretty much named for something, it's for that, doing that, and we do use for that thing.
But it is, it says right here that it's a legal prerequisite for adoption of zoning ordinance. Adoption of a historic district, establishment of a capital improvement program, and adoption of growth management ordinance. And the reason for it is planning. It's to help us plan well.
So.
So, maybe, I don't know, I won't, I won't have to hear it or see it, but in 20 years, we might hear people saying, what in the world were they thinking? Let that happen, you know?
Again, those things have to be addressed in the zoning ordinance itself and not necessarily in second under the regulations. One thing, the zoning ordinance is, any other ordinance is, you're passing by the town hall, it was a town, these regulations just passed by this board. So, you can't be too powerful.
Could we work on the, uh, landscaping and screening portion of it? So that if something doesn't fit in, but it's allowed by zoning through exception, it could be shielded? In the surrounding neighborhood? With the idea that it goes toward the, within the neighborhood?
How you can shield a 43 foot tall building?
45 foot trees.
However.
Well, basically, you would need enough boundary.
What, what we tend to do is opt towards the minimum, right? So if, instead of only requiring the minimum that our site plan regs call for, if we said in this instance where we have a situation that requires a great deal more screening, then perhaps we need to sacrifice some of the building bulk and instead use that for, for green space. And, and I think where we really run into trouble, and I think we're gonna continue to do this until we get brilliant about this, is the areas where we have residential abutting business districts, you know? Because we, in our zoning, our zoning map tends to have, you know, the, the business district running along our major arteries. But historically, that's where we've had houses, you know? So it happens all over town and it's really, you can't spot zone, right? But I think if, if there could be a way where we could be more thoughtful about, um, trying to, to, and perhaps it is landscaping, you know, perhaps that's the only tool we have, but trying to make those, the really diverse, divergent uses work better together, you know, protect one use from the other use.
And again, we're talking about the properties, two properties that we're talking about now are residential, actually, you know, we aren't talking about actual business.
Yeah.
So uses.
Yeah, so it was a, was a.
Multi-family, but.
Yeah.
Wasn't anticipated that it would be residential in business, in the business district.
Now, we can, um, control the density of landscape. Density is one thing.
Well, if. We could screen against the objective view of people going, that, that looks, that's what we can do. The, you're right, density, you have to write your density requirements to what you believe should be the density of that law.
Which we have.
And which we did.
Which we have, we changed.
Plain view is no longer allowed on that.
Right, no, it would not be allowed.
So Flatley is up in the woods.
Right.
And there are.
You have enough property to do that, you should do it. If you don't have enough property, you shouldn't build four stories, you know?
True. Well, also, it would help with the, which we don't like to use the word anymore, aesthetics. But it would have helped with the aesthetics had we put a buffer requirement on them. There are buffers in other places. We don't use them much here. And I think we need to start looking into them, and I'm not into protecting the developer. If, this is my community, and I don't care if it's Flatley or Avenue. If they come into Swansea and they wanna build something astronomically hideous on the roadway that I'm gonna drive by all the time, I want them to do all they can to make it look as inconspicuous and less offensive, inoffensive, as they possibly can. So if they have to spend 10 or $40,000 on buffer materials and plant the trees on top of them, I think they should. And I think that would have helped, if I were gonna live in that building, I would not want to look out at the traffic flying by on Route 10 or people filling their gas tank at Gamarlo. So I think that it's up to us to ask for those things.
How, excuse me, how do we, how can we create, or, you know, construct a zoning statement that will be compatible with what we're discussing this evening? Any ideas?
I think we all have. I think you'd have to use, like, that's about the only tool we have there.
Maybe like a ratio for the setback, or a bottom buffer.
Be that or specific story, huh? Three stories allowed in this part of town, or three stories allowed in rural Agnew.
Of the height, height requirements in each zone.
Yeah, that's what we're talking about. But, you know, trying to put 45 foot trees in front of a million.
They might die before they reach.
For argument's sake, you can have, okay, you better have a 10 foot setback. But for every additional story above two, you need an additional so many feet of setback.
That's what.
You look at, you look at where I am over in, uh, the Old Haley Park. There is a nice buffer zone between the buildings and Route 10. You don't have that in other places.
Only because those trees were there, I mean, yeah.
Well, it's a matter of what they were there or not, you know, I'm glad they were there.
Yeah, I'm saying, that's why you have the buffer. The buffer is still the same distance.
Yeah, but for every so many feet of height, you require so many feet of setback to bury the property, bury the building back into the property.
I don't think there would be, would have been anywhere near the objection had that project at the airport been put up where Flatley's property is, where it's back off the highway and out of sight. You know, the fact that it's.
That's obvious, because he didn't get any complaint at all.
Yeah, but that's, you know, it's, how do we, again, going back, how do we set up a zoning ordinance that will control that type of a project and not, not make it incompatible?
The height.
Mm-hmm.
If we can do that, that can solve a lot of problems.
You can take.
Could require different heights and different zones.
You could, you know, you'd have to think about it. Make sure that if it would pass muster, will play a challenge to regulatory. Sure that we aren't trying to eliminate.
Spot zone?
Well, not, not spot zone, but eliminate certain types of housing.
I don't think that would be the purpose of, you know, or the intent.
You know, it doesn't matter.
Business as well.
Yeah.
In certain zones.
Yeah, we don't quite besides competent to come into.
And even at that, most of them are not really visible from the highway. You know, thinking of the industrial park area, especially.
Even the ones on Route 12 are, they're, they're based on a lower piece of land. They're not built right up even, the first floor is not even left, they have to go down.
This circles back to what Jane was saying about the master plan too, because when those, um, surveys were conducted, each time the master plan's been updated, people have always talked about how it's the rural character of Swansea that people really value, you know, citizens value here. And, and I, you know, it's not something that we can define what rural character means, but we all know it when we see it. And, and what we're gonna see on, you know, across the Rosen Pond is not what we consider. And, and what we're going to see on, you know, across the Rosen Pond is not what we consider to be rural.
It's not, it's not just Swansea either. As it states in this NHOPD directory, it says, "For preserving and enhancing the unique quality of life and culture of New Hampshire." So we're going to be seeing that just fade away. If we allow that to happen. Right, we don't have, we don't have to swallow it.
You don't want to kill the job, so that's why you do.
Well, according to the master plan, we've really met our obligation, you know?
We can't use a master plan to buy something.
No, but we can feel good about the fact that we have actually, you know, we have permitted more units than would be our fair share for municipality. I mean, we've got the numbers to show that.
That's going to be 1,600 people.
Yeah, and there, there does the kinds of question of what's our capacity, you know?
Well, you know, we yell that all by people when I say, well, you have to look into the, what house, if we have it in our site plan regulations, what effect does that have on all our services like fire, police, and everything else?
Ratcheting up.
Sure, because you have to have so many police officers for your population, which is 2.1 per 1,000. You need police officers, well, we don't need that right now. Plus, the fact is, it's hard to get police officers these days. And the fire, you know, the fire, well, the fire, is the fire inadequate? Who knows? Your schools?
Yeah.
We're going to build bigger schools now?
Apparently so.
We're going to build in four stories.
But they, you know, we can't really put this in the master plan. Shouldn't even be saying it, but if we limit our extension of the sewer and water, then we limit that kind of development.
That's true, that's true.
At the bottom.
Yeah, West Swansea right now, West Swansea Water Company cannot provide the fire protection they want. They have to do something.
No, they'll still give the system in sewer. They should hook up to the sewer, then they're going to be building it. They get water enough, they don't care about the depression as much as the sewer. So we watch on how we're extending those systems in the future, then we're watching how we're extending. And right now, we are at capacity. My work, I don't know, just because of.
Oh, really?
The, well, design capacity is 160,000 gallons a day. We're running between 60,000 and 70,000 gallons a day down there. But when it was built, we didn't have restrictions or limitations on, we do now. That changed the border quite a bit, the system down. So we're keeping, keeping up with it. We're able to maintain it down there. That should be looking at your consideration with any other type of development.
The new development, I forgot what the numbers were, it's going to add for that.
Around 3,000 gallons, but not even going to sit at that much, but still, I mean, you know.
That one's three, and then the next one is another 3 or five.
Yeah, it's, the gallons per day is, like I said, what it's designed for. But it's the loading part, which is. And like that, the room system, and the ability of the bugs to take care of it before it gets out the other side into the river down there. And there's a new permit coming that the town is going to be, maybe six months from now, we're going to be on that permit at some point. And more provisions in that permit, they're going to, they're going to give us a, an aluminum number, which means the chemical we're using down there, the polyaluminum chloride, settle out the phosphorus. So that adds aluminum to the water. So now there's a thing, a limit on aluminum that you can grab that river. And there, it's like, I don't know, maybe five micrograms, that's five parts per billion. We would never make that at all. So we would have to change some kind of process down there, including the phosphorus, just to meet that number and still meet our phosphorus number. And I think they're going to have a number on iron as well. And the, the PPHS chemicals there that you ever hear, we're talking about, they're going to give some sort of a limit on that, but they can't do it yet because they haven't located a lab that can test it. Those parts per billion, they haven't located. Anyway, that stuff's coming down the line, this plan down there. So it goes back to what I said about sending the sewer line up there. Maybe if another one comes in, they say we can't do it. But there's a new structure down there, we gotta do another plan for it.
Good to know.
Yeah, as far as the master plan, relating back to the last plan, we can, we can do that in there. But again, the site plan with your regulations are pretty much following our zoning regulations, which follow the guidance of.
What Steve was saying with the, I wonder if maybe Sarah knows some other towns that have something like a.
There, I think there is something in our zoning about that. I don't recall, but I remember when that place that Steve lived in was growing up down there, and that was a high building around. It wasn't a problem because, you know, things were going high. They were talking about that, but I don't know if it's in there. I haven't seen it.
But I wonder if it's, we might be able to put in our site plan regs.
I would imagine they did, they took them in challenge.
Well, we did say that we want to minimize the disturbances in actual.
Yeah.
Lot, you know, so if they propose to go and cut all the trees and then build more buildings, is that what any board probably would have said, no, you know?
Yeah, probably, yeah. The setback thing, a screwdriver. Something, yeah, you can't control that because of. And density or no density. But again, the density has been changed. So this works like.
So I spent some time with the, the purpose section, because I, you know, because it's first. And I, what I did is I broke it up, I like turned that block of text into individual numbered points, okay? And kind of shuffled the language around and double-checked it against what the state says that we shall and may include in our purpose section or in our, in our regs. So I have that.
It's also. It basically says the same thing as.
It's basically the same thing, but it's reorganized in a way that feels to me like it addresses what our more primary objectives are. Yes.
We're working in the draft and with the draft.
Yes, let's do that. It's each full. And then I'm going to read it over. So that's the purpose section. If not, to scope of review. Just thinking, we reorganized it as well as was out of order quite a bit with the original one that we have here and the draft one that we had been working on before. Some things are before, but things now, it's more sensitive.
Do you want to just read through in your order and maybe have a little shuffle?
So authority's still one and purposes too?
Yeah, same purposes to, that's right. Scope of review, and what have anything on that? I had something. Had to do with, it's a, just a redundancy in the order. It says, the land use office is directed not to accept the site plan review application that does not include written permission from the owner of the property. Then on the section five general, not a problem on that. It might not be a specific area, it's just, it says it's not the same thing. It says the applicants for the site plan review is to either own the property in question or to find the written permission from the owner. The land use office is directed not to accept the site plan review application that does not include written permission from the owner of the property. I'm just suggesting you get rid of one of those.
Does it say the same thing?
It's the same thing, it's redone, yeah. We're out, under scope of review, I think we have it. So under scope of review, anyone have any suggestions? In there or sign up.
Did the 100 and 200? Did the 100 and 200, the, or the ratio? Of the whole current buildings or parking area?
This is for an example, right? Expansion of noise per feet, that's one parking space, what that is. So they could put in one parking space without border border. We're afraid to build like that.
But the difference with three lot market basket, no, I don't know. One parking space to be allowed for. I could ask to put in four, because of four times the size.
So that's what you meant by portion of the.
Yeah, proportion of the.
Yeah. It might be, we've, we've had that in there for a long time.
Might be a reason why you'd want to restrict one over the other because of the, like. Some places you would say, no, we don't want you to expand, you know? Because, you know, you get into the aqua filter and you get all these other problems.
Yeah, so they devoted 100 square foot greater building. Again, we're talking about businesses, we're talking about how single family or, or two-family homes. We're talking about three-family or larger.
Under permission to visit the property under general, where we have the right to go in and inspect, should we have some sort of identification that we can show the owner? Or should, because they're not, they don't know us.
No, they don't, and it should be put in there that we have to request permission to the property owner. He shouldn't be able to just, whether it was any word or not, just walk on the guy's property and say, well, I'm here to look around. We should have to call, ask the day or say, we're coming over, I'm coming over.
We even staff should.
Yeah, so we should have some wording in there, something that says that with permission from the property owner.
But again, should we have some sort of identification to give to the landowner or to show the landowner?
If the landlord or the owner notifies that, it's not self that's coming to this property, that's what's at issue.
Maybe if it's a business corporation, things license.
Yeah, but if they know who's coming, yeah, which is right. I don't know who the landlord is. So should be identified for sure.
Did you want that to be added for, you know, you know, of a member of the identifying property, is it?
Yeah, let's not put that in there. But, you know, we should, if we're going to do that. The property owner should be notified, if they're notified in order, I mean, anyway, on that time and date, so.
Years ago, we used to know everybody.
Yes.
For that too.
Yeah. Sure, we're on your foot. There's just a note in the plan that says neither preliminary conceptual consultation nor design review are required. Pre-application shall be separate and apart. Consideration of the site plan review application in the time when you're acting upon it. If you're not applying, I think we should just add, bill a pre-application.
Okay, going along in that, that line of thought, can we put in our review regulations that on what we would define as complex project, i.e. this one by NICS or the one where they're going to put in the storage for soil and et cetera, et cetera, that we have a conceptual review of it before we even act on application? My thought process is, let's look at something, have our, give ourselves time to review it thoroughly before we start the clock.
So my understanding that we can't require that conceptual. We have strong control and recommend it in the site plan regs, but we can't require.
Under why?
Because the RSA doesn't allow us to do that. And we can't require a designer review either. We can require a site plan, they give us, in their regs, they give us the authority to require site plan review and to review site plans. But they don't give us the authority to make them come in, conceptual work, design, that I understand. I think that's the case. But we still, I think we have it in our, our site plan review regulations that we do recommend it. I was thinking around, mine's went to that because in order of how we do things, the reorganization of this is in order. And the original one, yours, way out of order. We'll look and find out if it's.
Because it says pre-application phases, and again, just trying to buy us more time before we start the clock and then get ourselves into a box that we can't get out of.
You have under submission requirements, or the old section 10. You've got the owner's name, under just on number two, which is the North Town, scale is 50 feet, which is one inch. And a name and address of the location of the flat, 40 feet, which is pretty much the standard.
We should change our checklist then too, because you say it one inch equals 30 feet.
Yeah, we should change that, right? Oh, 30 feet?
Yeah, I forgot that.
Yeah, so it should be changed to 40 feet. That's pretty much the standard term in those programs. Underneath that category there. And it says the application shall be accompanied by any necessary federal, state, or local permission approval. But we should change that to should, because the board cannot deny acceptance of an application just because the applicant doesn't have the approval of whatever, some permit or something like that. Or even there's only one court of legal. Take it and add that as a condition. Not except that, I mean, just the. We encourage us to do that, and it should get on, but instead of challenging.
Before we go further on that, going back to eleven. No, section eleven. Under the four year exemption.
Yeah, that's that's five years. I think. Is that what you were gonna say?
No, I just.
You could change that to five. That's page nineteen of the original.
What constitutes substantial?
The planning.
Because. I was gonna say because we agreed to the one up on route twelve by the fairgrounds. We said, okay, substantial constitutes you you taking all the old buildings out of there and leveling everything out. That constitutes, you know, the substantial requirement, which he had a year to do something with. Hasn't nothing's been done since then, other than I think they drilled for compact. Yeah, oh, you know, that was done a number of months ago before winter set in. But what actually constitutes substantial?
It's up to the board to decide that.
Subjective term.
One by one, I mean. Flat that we're deciding on for the board to come up with what is substantial. Have a set thing because.
Right, we don't want to, again, bury ourselves because it's a subjective thing and.
So that's what constitutes it, the board agrees. It says, no, that isn't substantial. And now that's a. That's a five hundred question now, maybe that's six seventy four.
Really get that one at seven hundred three. Chapter three, right? I know you and I, Sarah, talked about it. That's going where they changed the law, we no longer can pass the select and for extension.
Yeah, right, we got rid of that. Not my. Interview, section twelve. If I can find it in here. These numbers are all different. All my notes are in the other one here, but let me just read the paragraph to you. It's under describing how the applications are processed. And it's, yeah, it says the application shall be submitted to the planning board at the next regular meeting. Notice will be given. The board shall determine if the submitted application is complete according to these regulations and shall go on acceptance. Such meaning that they do within thirty days following delivery of a completed application. So the completed application by the board shall at first regularly schedule a meeting. After notification to a voter has been presented by parlay. Six seventy six four I D. And just after that, we see it everywhere else in the market. And a public hearing may immediately follow or be scheduled for a day.
So what RSA did you cite again?
That was RSA, that's six seventy six four I D. That's just a notification RSA. Tells who has to be notified. Six seventy six oh and four. Again, that's just referenced in this paragraph and just for notification purposes. So we would have to write down all nine areas to notify and how they're notified and so on. You should add that sentence that we may have a public. And we also have, again, it's not in order here, but. Board action on a completed application. And we've got in there, the board shall begin consideration of the completed application within thirty days of the date the application was accepted as complete by the board. So. We aren't required to do that. No statute is telling us to act upon it within thirty days, just to act upon it within sixty five days. Now, we can have anything we want like that in our regulations. We can do that. But again. We might be, you know, painting ourselves in the corner.
Why do we why do we shorten that timeframe? Why do we?
We haven't shortened any. I'm just saying that this is in our our site plan with the regulations that which else would be in consideration and we can keep it that way too. It doesn't matter. It's just an option. Required to do that, statute is an option that the board should do. If we want to put in our regulations that we would. Start considering the application within thirty days of accepting it as complete, then we need to get in there and do it.
We still have to.
Have to do it anyway.
We have to have the meeting to accept the application.
Yeah.
Thirty days.
That's within thirty days of the of when the application's been submitted.
Right.
Thirty days to act on it there, but we we don't have to act on it thirty days after that. Sixty five days that. Start thirty days, we can start reading from there as a simple.
Well, we have given down by sixty five.
Sixty five, down by sixty five.
So you have forty five days. Not forty five, it's only thirty five.
Depending on the meeting to fall within the.
Yes, again, yeah, again.
I'm just saying, just pointing out and seeing there, seeing what the board wants to do.
The board wants to take us off too far though, letting you paint yourself in the corner.
I don't really work, yeah. You're putting it off and just saying that the board wants to keep it in there, keep it in there, we don't have to have it in there. It's never been a problem, I don't think, since I've been on the board.
Bless the school.
So you're saying this is you've never reverted to this item to cause us to start moving.
No one ever come in and said, hey, you guys didn't, you know, start considering my application. It's been well within thirty day or after thirty days that you accepted it as complete, what's going on? Never had that happen.
If you already said around sixty five days. I don't understand why we shortened it to thirty days.
Oh, we didn't short it. What we're doing is that we're just telling the applicant that the board is going to act upon your application that we accepted at a meeting. We're gonna act upon that within thirty days. We still have sixty five days to make a decision, determination, but we're gonna act on it within thirty days and get things logged. That's what that paragraph said. And we're just promising to them that we're gonna.
It's what probably do anyway.
We do anyway.
Yeah, probably.
Hell do it.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So at the end of the sixty five days, that has to be done though, right?
Right.
So. If we wait too long, I think is what somebody else started to say. Towards that sixty five day mark when we have to approve it or reject it. Then if we wait until day sixty and we only have that five day interval there, then you can't continue it to a next meeting, right?
Not unless the applicant says, yeah, we'll give you any permission. Make a position.
So.
Supposed to know that.
So then if we had another project like the one at the airport, which was how many meetings did we sit through? And we wait until day sixty to bring that up in front of the board, we're only gonna have that one meeting right then and there to whether approve it or reject it.
Yeah, correct. That's what we should know enough not to do that.
Right.
Well, that's why I was bringing up. The review. Before we start the before we start the clock.
And it is all also just a good idea to do that, and if there are things, you know, if. An applicant decides not to do the conceptual or the designer view or just comes right in with the application. The planning board, they don't have the information that they need, they can either. Deny it without prejudice, so they can back in again, or whatever, but they have to tell them what they need for information and it's gotta be, you know, something that.
Is it something that we could get Sarah to suggest when they come in with their applicant? For review?
We do kind of go through the motion of that unofficially and we do recommend it in things in Republicans.
They did a conceptual, yes.
Not a lot of things are commendable.
Again, yeah, that's one thing, if the planning board has all the information, but if we don't, then then that can either.
We just back it up to that last thing. Are we striking the thirty day requirement?
I think we might as well, because we aren't required to do it by statute. You do it anyway. So rather than put something in there that we get about and we didn't do it, say it was thirty one days and we acted upon it. Not with the name there. Wanted to cause trouble for us.
If we had sticker.
That sticker is very good.
Does that make you understand what Scott's proposing here? So what would happen is you would receive the application and you would accept it as complete. And the rule right now says you have to act on that, you have to take the next step within thirty days. Statutorily, you have a sixty five day period to complete your action on any application. So this is just removing that thirty day shell. You still would have been aware of the application to accept it as complete, which would start the clock. They want, right? So it wouldn't be like, let's say sixty and we just found out about it, because you would have had it already accepted the application.
Okay.
You know, so if you guys were waiting until day sixty, you'd still be getting very negligent.
Well, I I don't like the idea of if the statute gives us sixty five days. Why we were even thinking about shortening the legal.
We're not.
You're not.
And we can't.
Sixty five altogether, then thirty, it's just in the middle of the sixty five, it doesn't. It doesn't get together sixty.
It's just a board, right?
Yeah.
Just a board rule, it's not a statute.
Yeah, you've got supposed to follow.
Well, that's where.
That's where you wanna get rid of it.
That's why we have.
Sure.
Unless you can think of how it got there in the first place, Scott.
I think it got there by mistake, because of the thirty day, you have to act on the application within thirty days of it being submitted to the land use board. And I think they just said, well, on a thirty day act on it, yeah.
There's no penalty if you haven't.
No.
It's a suggestion.
It is.
Is it statutorily stated that once we once we accept? Or if we went to the thirty days? That that thirty days is included within the sixty five day period? Does it say that specifically?
It says, yeah, it says that. It says that from the the day the board accepts the application, that's when the sixty five days go. You know, if if it's run out to the thirtieth day that we've got to act on it, since it's been submitted to the board, when we accept it on that thirtieth day, then it starts at sixty five days. But the board can't discuss it unless it's preliminary or conceptual before them. It's just been submitted to the land use office. Got to put it on the agenda, notice is sent out, and the board takes a look at it. So we've got thirty days to do that, to accept it as a free term.
We understand that, you understand that, Sarah understands that, but in the future, somebody might not understand that, so maybe that would be a reason to leave it there.
Yeah, that's not, that's a different thirty days.
Oh, yeah.
This is the thirty days.
Okay.
Yeah, they're two.
For the board to meet and decide whether or not it's complete.
So actually, we have ninety five days from the time that it's submitted to the land use board.
Okay.
We do.
I mean, not to me to the office.
When it's in the office, any board member can go in there and take a look at all the stuff, you know, the plans and all that type of stuff. We can all do that without discussing it in a meeting and still be familiar with the plan before they even come in for acceptance.
Which I have done on occasion.
Okay, is that something then not to blow it up, Sarah or Mike or whatever?
Sarah has them all there all.
No, what I'm saying is if something like that comes in. That we get a notice that, okay, we have this application. Please come in and review.
Oh, yeah, email.
Does that?
Yeah, saying it was a little complicated.
You know, I don't try, I'm not trying to burden you with any.
But when we're doing it, you know, if there are two planning board members there, you can't really discuss and say, well, I don't like this, this isn't right.
Just jot it down.
Plan later, just how to review them, just basic reviewing on them, that's what we should be doing, just get familiar with the plan. And not necessarily discussing it with one another, whether it's two people or five people or whatever.
Potentially add you guys onto the department head review email that I send out. Do not respond to it as a department head and review the plan. It would just be the heads up that when you get a presentation comes in, the planning and V P A. Then you know there's a plan in the office and you can go look at it. Or you'll have the plan on your computer and you can.
People wonder when somebody else is there, we just, oh, really? Yeah, come back.
One, two, three.
Yes.
Okay, underneath that one, minus B, but let me just read this paragraph, there's no huge change here. It says, the board shall act to approve, conditionally approved or disapproved, the completed application within sixty five days plus thirty days before development. Of submission except as otherwise divided herein. That submission should be accepted. Because if it's within sixty five days of submitting, whenever they submit, the land use office, they think they're starting with sixty five days there, but it's not. Change that word mean to accept. This is the old seven. And it's just that. Small thing here, I'll read the paragraph. After the application is accepted as complete and prior to approval or disapproval, a public hearing shall be held in accordance with RSA six seventy six four I D. That should be four. Then it goes on to say, notice, a public hearing shall be given to the applicant. The public and every engineer architect connected there. Professional seal here on the flat, that part of that has been there. Then we could just say that is the per six seventy six four I D, which was set up there before. That's a notification. Talking about notifying those people. Six seventy six four I D, which is the notification.
I don't have that anywhere. No, I'm looking at this.
On there, okay, looking at our six seventy six.
Four.
First one with four. Row number one, I D. That is the note taken, paragraph.
Oh, okay, with the time, when the time period's specified.
Yeah, that's the notification part of it. The one that we looked at before was six seventy six oh and four I E. Says the public hearing has to be held in accordance with that RSA. That just says, the RSA just says that the planning board has to hold a public hearing on a site plan.
With, oh, no, just in regard to public hearings, sometimes I don't think that people. Are here for a public hearing, they might like to be here for because we move right on into a public hearing. And I think we might get more public interaction. And vocalization of how they feel about these things if we, on some of the things, we might be able to hold off a public hearing and notice it.
Yeah, I I agree with that because. It also gives the board a chance to think about the application. Yeah, I, I agree with that, because it also gives the board a chance to think about the application, think about the year and there. The only thing, you know, turned the other way is because they took away the ninety day review period and brought it down to sixty five days. So that, we're, we're cutting ourselves short again, another two weeks short again, by doing that. It's nice, I think it is best to think about the thing before we actually have a public hearing, accept the application, we all have it, think about it, then we've got, you know, the intelligent questions to ask the applicant, and then when they come in for the public hearing, and most of them, but again, we've got that time. It hasn't been a problem. We just have to consider that, but I agree with that. It's a good thing to do sometimes, just that, accept it at one meeting, have a public hearing at the next. Some of them are just small.
Yeah, they might not come to every meeting, you know, they might not come to that initial meeting, but if they're noticed of a public hearing on that meeting, they've had time to think about it, then we get more public interaction.
When they get the notice, it does mention that we may have a public hearing right afterwards in that notice.
Yeah, this is true, but it's, we may have.
Yeah.
And, and they might, they may not consider.
The public hearing will be held right afterwards, or if not, a day, kind of a. We do, yeah, it's. Basically, it's the, some of the smaller things, they should go right on like that.
Yeah.
But some of the larger things, yeah, we might have, that, think about it time, but again, the longer ones, we will switch to that.
That's, I think that's where our ability to go in before we have that application review.
And we also can, can continue the public hearing, you know.
But it was still on the clock.
But we can still, right, it's on the clock, right, but still continue the public hearing, you know, and think about it for another two weeks, and then come back. Do that with a lot of the larger projects, because you can't think about everything at the meeting when you're there, you know, when you get home and think about. What happened to that, or why didn't they say that, or did they say this? But when you close the public hearing, it's out of the matter. You know, the board members suggest, because again, I forget things at the meeting, I'm trying to run it, trying to concentrate on keeping it flowing there, but just suggesting, well, shall we postpone or? We're al- already going to, I think. About not having a public hearing until we're burnt from the conservation.
Not to make just once a month?
We wanted to make sure that we didn't have a public hearing before they got a chance to meet, because after the public hearing, we know that.
I know we discussed it, I remember discussing it, but I don't know if we put it in writing.
You always commence the public hearing in reserved decision, which gives us additional time for you to render a decision, then, or reserve decision pending receipt of the conservation committees.
Still on the clock, though.
It's still on the clock, we've got to be in a public meeting, we can't just postpone if we actually open a public hearing, we can just, not this one, we can continue the public hearing until the next meeting.
Then I suppose that if, if one felt that we should, we could make a motion that we not have the public hearing until the next meeting.
Next meeting, I have to do that. Still, it's still on the clock, like we've said, regardless.
Yeah, it is.
Open the public hearing or not, but we're telling.
But, but we can't be, I, I don't feel like we should be pushed.
I know, I feel that way so often, so I feel like, you know, when, when I know, I just need to think more. So we should, in practice, we should feel, it sounds like you're encouraging us in practice to feel free to propose that we continue if we're not ready. If we just feel too much pressure.
Any other things going up at the meeting, you know what? Don't let me carry the meeting. Just join in, don't think, you got a stupid question, or question that you shouldn't ask, or whatever, just ask it. That, that's the way we have the discussion on each meeting, that's the way we get things done. So again, if it looks like I'm carrying the meeting or taking over the meeting, just slide in, say something.
There's, there's no way that, that we can stay a decision that would stop the clock and restart it, is there?
Everything, but you know.
Think of that, yeah.
Funny thing about that, again, the planning board has sixty five days to do that. If the planning board hasn't acted within the sixty five days, the selectmen have another thirty days to convince the planning board to make a decision. Then if that thirty days is up, the selectmen have another ten days, it can't be forty days, they have another ten days to actually approve it. So actually, the planning board, planning board wants to be negligent, they can have another thirty days, because then it goes to the selectmen, trying to manipulate if they had to.
Purposely negligent.
Yeah. A little test twenty two there.
Yeah.
It's another thirty days.
As long as the board understands it's, it's future, as long as the select member is doing.
Yeah, but it'll always be approved.
And if the selectmen, you know.
Right, if you guys don't want to approve.
Selectmen have thirty days to convince the planning board to do something. And then if the, the planning board doesn't claim the selectmen ten days, and it has to be approved.
But then, I think then our, our situation was, according to the legal advice that we got, we would lose control. Once the selectmen say, you've got to approve it, then they can go, they could go back.
The selectmen can't tell us to approve, the selectmen has to tell us to act on it. We can't say which way that we have to act on it, they just have, have to say that you guys are going to act on it. Forty days, we're going to make a decision, forty years.
But after sixty, you don't have to approve. So, is it?
Sixty five? Anyway, yeah, let's not do that.
Yeah, okay, move on.
Let's do what we've been doing, we're going, doing. Okay, this is the old seven oh six four, and it reads that the notice of public, the public hearing was included in the notice of submission, any prior notice, additional notice of the public hearing is not required. Additional orders is not required, planning adjournment session, adjournment session, a hearing provided date, time, and place of adjournment session was made known at the prior meeting. But it refers to it as hearing, I think, in our, in our RSA, so I'm just suggesting we change that. Or the hearing.
I think I kind of want to speak about considering the situation, if we even have the meeting, we had a public hearing posted. But we didn't have a public hearing, did not open a public hearing, did not accept an application as complete, but we announced the change of the date for that public hearing at the meeting. I just want to question it.
We announced the date of the application, but we didn't accept an application, or we weren't accepting.
So, yeah, let's take a look at the, what I'm saying is, you're suggesting we're going to, oh, so that section is only required for public hearing, okay, nevermind, sorry.
One. Yeah, the RSA, absolutely. The, they didn't, proper notice, the date, time, and place of the adjournment session was made known at the prior hearing. Got a note on land, you need to look at that land station, because it's public. Looking, see if I have another mutation on that, but. Is it for your extension? Yeah, we have under, called communication facilities there. Section nine, I'm not sure what it is in our, but again, it's the minor thing, I'll just read through this paragraph. It's talking about the set back the tower, that, and it reads towers must be set back at a distance equal to hundred twenty five percent of the height of the tower of any on-site or downtown structure. So we're limiting it.
That speaks for me, right there, right?
We're, yeah, we're, it is, that's right, but we're limiting that to that amount, to that distance there. Uh, so I think we ought to just have a read of this, towers must be set back a minimum distance that leaves hundred twenty five percent of the height of the tower from any on-site or downtown structure, that means that they can be set back further. This is saying that it has to be at one twenty five percent, we're saying.
Oh, more, you want to, you know, it needs to be pushed back even further.
Yeah, that, that, it's a minimum, setting a minimum standard there.
Okay.
That leaves a hundred twenty five percent of the height of the tower.
So, so.
That, just wanted to check, we got the special flood hazard areas there, that was the old thirteen. And I just, I was wondering, Sarah, if you know, from section number two, and we refer to the flood insurance rate maps, flood boundary and floodway maps of the town as well, that they didn't make it nineteen eighty one.
Should I make sure that matches?
Yeah. Yes, just want to make sure that. We did that a couple of weeks ago. And if it was going to read like this, we had AV and Steve. So I think we decided to go, Steve, it says new tenant applications. Businesses moving into a multi-use building that received site plan approval can't produce a new tenant approval of the same type of permitted use may be allowed by the planning board approval without further formal site plan review or public hearing before the planning board. Public hearing deemed necessary in such a case, works with the seven six four. That, I think, that covers that new tenant application, one we had in the old.
Under that, same thing under home base, the number one, where the, where it says application submitted? Can we insert applications that have been submitted? Making that more.
You're right, applications submitted to the board of selectmen for qualification refused upon basis.
So after, after applications, just insert that have been.
I think what it's intended to say is applications first are submitted to the board of selectmen, and then after the selectmen qualify, then the next thing is happening. It's a bad sentence. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think Victoria is right, I think that's what that.
So let's move first, then us.
What?
So let's move first.
Okay, Sarah, you're going to come up with a word on that.
Is that a D again, or a E, it's more familiar? RSA six seventy six, colon, four, I.
That would be, that would be the D, because the E just talks about the requirement of having to have a public hearing.
I, I'm sorry, but under six seventy six four, I don't have an I.
Well, six seventy six, one, number one.
Yeah. I've been saying I the whole time, it's, it's right under that one. On page. That's effective January first, twenty twenty three, is that on the front of the back?
Yeah, with revocation.
Four seventy seven, eight, four seventy seven.
Let me, if I may, give me a second more to get my fingers working here. I understand my mistake. Because I was, I was looking after the six seventy four, on, on four eighty two, this is six seventy six, four, dash, A. And that's, that's what.
Yeah, that's a little bit.
Yes, that's why I was a little confused of what, sorry about that.
Under the appeals, we had. That was something to that, because they're new, that they. How's the appeal board, the new board that?
Yes.
We, we might have to make reference to that, because it had to do with housing. We now have appeals, and a person agrees by decision of the planning board, may appeal said decision to the Superior Court. Is it ruled by the board, is based on?
Yeah, we'd have to put the housing order, it's a state choice.
We have to put it on, on less, because it's not for, it's not for the businesses.
Right, it's only for housing.
I can do, to this name, so you might have to put it or a separate sentence that says, an appeal may be made under that new.
Superior Court.
It has to do with housing.
Well, the Superior Court does, does applicable.
Yeah.
Well, they can't go through the board before they go to Supreme Court, you got to make, you can't go right to the Supreme Court.
On the appeal, it's a housing, it goes to the housing board, it's a, non, it's commercial, it goes to the CFO Superior Court after the appeal.
Yeah. Commercial goes to Superior Court.
Yeah.
Yeah. Commercial one, before they had the housing appeals, you would go to the zoning board of adjustment, if your gripe was that the planning board didn't follow the zoning of that town, then you go to your VDA. Now, it is that it's under the housing part of it, you can go to the housing appeals board. To appeal it, the decision by the planning board, if it's not industrial, then you go to the Superior Department.
It's, it's six seventy nine in the, in this.
I think, didn't they just, it seemed like the developer, the applicant.
Seventeen, page five seventeen.
Went to the housing appeals board, and then that together as a part, they appealed to the Superior.
Well, you can feel, yeah, you can feel their decision, if you don't like the housing.
But, but, no, so I think the housing appeal board was supporting the applicant, was, was representing the applicant at the Superior.
I don't think they were representing them, but the, the town, I mean, the, the town did not like the housing appeals board decision, because they upheld the subdivision of whoever was the applicant there. So then the town said, well, we're going to go to the Superior Department, we're right. So I don't think the appeal board represented them, I don't think they can do that, I think they had their own attorney.
Which we did the same thing, in North Swanson. That was on the ZPA. Six seven, six eighteen, six seventeen?
Six eighteen?
Yes. And six seventy nine is the citation. Five, I'm sorry, five seventeen. There are not many pages in the book.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, Housing Appeals Board, when it was established.
Yeah, I was looking for that.
Now, use a ten, say there was, can you do it? It was rejected three times by the one that's like.
One, two, three.
Six seventy-nine. On seventeen, bottom right. Starting here, we can go right. So we also have, um, this is back in November, we had a correspondence to the Conservation Commission, Jay Ward. Regarding the groundwater detection. We added some groundwater detection and protection stuff, wellhead protection stuff. In ordinance, Georgia. And they had some suggestions on it. Was that with their paragraph, is it, any property where land disturbing activities are depicted, inactive wells not in use or properly contained, if the site has to find the site work, plans admitted, they'll be considered abandoned, must be sealed by the well owner and according to the most current version of the water, well board rules. W E A four. They suggested putting that in there, which is probably a good suggestion, just in case, you know, you get around on an old well owner.
Well, it's and or sister. Just in case somebody has a.
Well, why not?
If he said it's not.
Yeah, the big one out there, so yeah.
Yeah.
When Conservation Commission just a few years ago were walking on, um, over by the Kenny Farm, Crescent, not Crescent, in the woods, there was an old well there and there were boards that had been laid on top of it, but they were much deteriorated. And Steve Stepanak did go back on his own time and, and put boards on there that fit and so they could be seen, but I suppose it's still there. Yeah. What?
Still probably not promptly sealed.
I don't know if it is or if it was, was the town owns now, that we'd have to check.
This just covers site plan, the regulations for anything other than residential.
Hmm. Where would it fit?
That would be, um. I think you did, we had, uh, we had, mine was, uh. This is a down. They've had it under general standards. Yeah, under general standards is what they had. Good basic.
General standards is.
Or general divisions.
Page twelve, I saw. There we go, the actual general standards. What was it, page one?
It said general standard, what maybe it is. They left it right after the water supply and storage. Something in here about that. No, they did have it on there, I've got a number six, it's not number six on yours, but they had it right after the water supply and storage. It would go there, maybe the three numbers both, we have twelve things in that category. We have water supply, food, food, food systems, we have underground fuel, storage tanks, stormwater drainage, pollution control, and it can't burst these facilities, because it's in under the compliance. Got to, yeah, I had it fit there, because then the next one is underground fuel storage. I wrapped up, they had it. Systems in there. You have to talk about. And also had, they had another, this was under stormwater drainage, they asked for any use that will render incurious more than fifteen percent or more than twenty-five hundred square. Of any lot, whichever is greater, still more management plan shall be put in areas of the planning. Of the New Hampshire Stormwater Manual. Generally, you have, I don't know, that's a small area, it's selling like fifty feet or fifty feet, so that'd be every single, every single development. Sounds a little stricter to me, although we do have, normally they add to, that is a smaller. Drainage plan on. It talks about increasing the peak flow surface drum, can't go onto another property. Does anybody think, I don't even have a copy of this, I just have a copy of it.
Well, the four condo units there on the old front row, we referenced that we have detection.
Oh, yeah, yeah. They all kind of have to, because part of the cyclone review regulations is that no stormwater can leave property. They are not, although they do building coverage and verdict. Well, I think we haven't covered that. I think we do.
Two of them.
They also suggested, at the number three, there should be a designated area for snow accumulation and production on outside sources. We do have a designated, designated areas for still. We don't allow outside sources to dump, no, that I know of anyway. We didn't, yeah, it had to be a use. Again, these were suggestions, but they.
We don't have any idea of the management, you know, I mean, people tell us, people were there, we don't, like, you know, some that we just got. I know when, when we were talking about the development, um, lots of Wilson farm, but Mike Gavins said, oh, they'll just truck it out, but we don't have any way to quantify really, the snow storage space is out of there.
Other than taking up their parking spaces, no.
Yeah.
They're helping, you know, because they don't have storms like we had the other day.
What are you doing, getting light snow versus heavy snow? What's now versus last year?
Yeah. Then it has to be, they have their parking. But they can be added as an addition of cyclone, but it has to be in worse all the time. Because no, Mike doesn't have to have to have to say, well, okay.
Some people won't.
There is no town location where anyone in town could, could dump their snow from the parking area, is there?
I don't think, not that I know of. Not even at the dump, I don't think.
Yeah. Cause I know like in Keene, they're allowed to do it, uh, where the old double, where the old dump used to be.
Yeah. And, uh, the fair room will sometimes get the snow trucked in. For the purpose of building water or cargo. Or stone, stone, stone cross or whatever they call it, slid over their ramps. But that's a waste of that.
And it's right, yeah. Well, see, we had also under the after-projection part of it and wellhead protection area there. We've covered, they go through it as far as, uh, they have outdoor storage areas regulated substances located with material waste. We've got that covered on E, F, and G, page one. So we'll, we'll hold off on that, I, I can read some of these there, but we can hold off on that. Same, I think they pretty much have a copy of what we had there. Yeah, they had, they added in this, even if anybody thinks about it, you know, you might wanna add this in, and it really. Plan for blasting activities, all activities related to blasting shall be performed in accordance with current New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services blasting management practices to prevent contamination of groundwater, including parent and reviewing, and following approved blasting plan, fire, proper drilling, and loading procedures. Drilling and fire from blasting procedures to generate blasting tolerance and handling from storage of that block. So you might wanna put that in there, because blasting may affect. An apple word. Not too much better out around here, but.
Even, even just some of the big erratics, you know, that's a good deal.
Yeah.
Exciting blasting.
Might wanna just put it in there.
Especially as we get more down, yeah, it's gonna be less.
Wouldn't, and the application would might not see that and have, and bring that to their attention, if they have to follow the state or federal.
Yeah, but they do anyway, right, they do anyways.
Hmm.
That's a wonder, it won't, won't hurt my health.
See, moving out of school, the proposed annual storage for manure and fertilizers, we've got that in there, spill control and, and countermeasure plan, we have that in Jay Ward. We also had, this is from Jay Ward, February third. And he just had some thoughts on the harmony and compatibility of the project compared to the existing side neighborhood. He just was, uh, that the, the planning board determination of whether the proposed cyclone and building architecture is acceptable shall depend on, but not be admitted to the following appearance factors. Talks about building materials and the planning board, which leads to the goal of the project. We've got that covered under section eight, well, that's been the new one, don't forget yours. I went through them to see if we had a building size and the committee board. Size of the other building, yeah, that's covered under density, can't really talk about that really, other than zoning density. The colors of the building, the planning board must be aware of the colors of the building in that wood. Covered on page twelve, D. They've got the shape of the building, including roof line, and the planning board must be aware of the building in that wood. You probably can't, can't do too much on the shape of the building, we have dictated who did that here. Put that in there, I don't think we have roof line.
Are you, architectural plans, is that, I mean, where would this go?
It would go under, um, under the harmony and compatibility, they've got it.
It's a whole new section.
It would go under section D. And let me just, again, I'm going by different one, we'll all have this one for the next, next meeting. Probably.
General standards, designed, you know, over the.
I, I think we should have the moving in there, so that the last two, they stayed in place.
Yeah.
So they didn't have an extra.
No, but their benefit is it did.
Yes.
Because we have this on page sixteen, the version that most of us have, it's architectural plans. And it says the evaluation of the following appearance factors will govern the planning board's decisions and whether the proposed building size is acceptable. And it talks about harmony and compatibility.
Yeah.
Lighting design, uh, building materials and how it's. Talk about woodwork, maybe we could add some of that stuff.
Oh, the section that should go.
Probably in, uh, two, building obligations.
What's that?
Probably.
Okay, yeah.
Building obligations, right.
Well, that just says that the plan shall indicate.
Yeah.
That we have any authority to evaluate.
So we're, we're talking about the roof lines being added in there someplace.
Here we do, building materials, number one, following appearance factors, building materials, features, and color considerations. Speeches, I, I know they work, it's a more diverse and subtle.
Yeah. And that's within our jurisdiction. Yeah, roof, maybe just roof line somewhere in there. Like a design headlight, we're gonna light. They've got a number six on here that's agreed, retention, alteration, or removal of existing structures and site features should, if you need the planning board, need the appearance of the site in accord with the surrounding neighborhood. Disaster control area, they retain the building as a property, it's on the property, it's already there. Uh, alteration, that's one thing, but that's gonna be covered in the site plan anyway. Removal of the existing structure. Talking about the appearance of the site in the surrounding neighborhood. I'll read it again, but I don't know if I can give you any too much sense of that. The retention, alteration, or removal of existing structure and site features should, if you need the planning board, need the appearance of the site in accord with the surrounding neighborhood. No, I'm reading some of, hey, we've got this back in one of our February meetings, I just kept it in here. And this was some suggestions, uh, they were from Jay Ward. And there, it was after we had some of those meetings there. Suggestions, they knew that we were gonna be going over it. So kept it so we could bring it. But that one, I don't think it makes so much sense, I think.
Well, it's already in under, on page sixteen of the old, the evaluation of the following appearance factors, and then number four, it's retention, alteration, or removal of existing structures and site features. Period. We'll just add it in, what I think is already covered by the top part, which is what we are down here.
And that was the last one. And about two suggestions. Like I say, we've, we've gotta discuss the, maybe not tonight, but we better discuss the landscaping part of it there. Now, we go into the logic, we're suggesting the type of treatment, brown cover, I don't know, we should be in that business. But I don't know, and well, if any more suggestions, I'd do that. Plus, it probably should just refer back to this, the soil survey, you know, we get the platinum here and the site always has a soil survey, what kind of soil is there? And a Michigan soil survey, look it up there, they, they tell you what kind of trees and drug or diseases for that. They, they tell you what kind of trees and shrubs are, is in it for that, as well as what type of tree should be planted in more So maybe we want to just say that they should move back from the floral survey. What can use for, for trees or shrubs. Probably mainly trees, shrubs probably not problem, bringing saw for shrubs.
If we tell them to go ahead and plant hemlocks and they die in ten years, then are we liable for the ten, those trees that die?
They were liable, right?
Uh, the, the plan for the landscape business said they were going to plant a certain kind of pear. And, and I looked it up and it is considered invasive by many now because it's been used so much in the United States. It's a Chinese origin, but it's been used a lot because it is a tree that grows fast and blooms beautifully. But it's been used so much that now it's.
Is it the town repair?
Yeah.
And that's known as one of ours in here, so we, we ought to just forget about suggestions and let them figure out and us approve.
Yeah, and you can look them up very easily on Google or any search engine.
Well, like in the past, we, we've talked to the butters and they suggested certain types of things that they'd like to see. And if we can make an agreement between the butter and the developer, that's the best of both worlds.
The other thing, the other kind that I noticed that they had was a spruce and vine, but I, when I looked that spruce up, there were other spruces on the list that looked better than that, that grew faster than that and were described as being thicker than that. But I don't want to tell them what to plant, but I would draw their attention to the fact that they have an invasive on the list. It's kind of strange because they are landscaping.
One big, like, it's an awful hard application.
Yeah, it's another reason, I think, to get rid of that part of it. And it, it says on the recommended, uh, recommended general approach to landscaping, use plants that are suitable for roadside and parking lot conditions, where he did that list. I need to go to New Hampshire Resources there. So maybe we ought to just have in there, use plants that are suitable for roadside and suitable, uh, to the soils that are found inside in accordance with.
They get rid of recommending any type of species.
Yeah, amen.
They have that.
Or just reference the New Hampshire list, sure.
They have a winter flame dogwood on there too. Oh, my gosh. We planted one of those by mistake. That thing's ugly. It doesn't do anything for anything.
Need to borrow my chainsaw?
No, it isn't even that big. I could cut it down, but.
So let's just have something there that says that the, the trees selected should be suitable to the soils that.
And for the purpose they're planted.
Well, that too, the planning board will tell them.
Yeah, okay.
Probably get rid of that, that long word. Parts used, part of it, we need to go over some of that at some point there. The, um, we have the two should sense the. It was a ten percent of, or green or open space in the interior of the parking lot, is what we're having a problem with, but one of the site plans there. And, uh,
That's a rabbit hole. Do you want to go down that tonight?
I think Sarah will be. I certainly would.
Probably won't, but just something to think about there. Um, take a look at some of the existing parking lots, and I've looked at some of them, and a lot of them, that isn't ten percent in there. It, it looks, we'll take Market Basket, I've got the Market Basket plan.
Oh, my goodness.
But those, the parking, that parking lot up there, um, just from a rough calculation, it looks like about seven percent. The interior of the parking lot is green space and it looks fine. It's a nice park. Probably think about that and nail that down and think about what we're going to include. Because remember, we had that discussion, that your part, you weren't, you were part of that discussion, and what should be included in the dream.
Certainly, I can't take that.
Okay. So, yeah, I brought a set of plans that I've got from, uh, with Market Basket, they're pretty old there. I've had them just to locate some cool items out of there. A good set of plans is just to look at and get familiar with, you know, the we could look more, we did bring to look over them tonight and.
Boy, we haggled over those.
Yeah.
Well, you know.
Generally, go with them a bit. Maybe we'll, we'll quit right there for the site plan regs. Bust us up to add, and it, you can copy up the, that there, and we'll all be going on the same one next time, and this is what it looks like.
Would you like me to make the additions in a calcized font so that they're easier to see or just take them right in?
I would say just type them in. Want to see what's been changed? We can compare it to the old one. I don't know. The lot that, especially.
Yeah, right.
We can, we can compare and read the old one. It's up to the board. Does anybody want to take a look at any of the plans or shall we focus on that in the next meeting?
I moved, we adjourned.
I'm excited to look at the plans, but.
Yeah.
At least.
Just to mention a couple of things, then we can adjourn. There was two things I've been thinking about that we may think about in the future, what we want to do with. Coming range, I guess they call it, EV charging stations.
The what?
EV electric vehicle charging stations.
Yeah.
How do, do we want to write some kind of ordinance or plan, site plan regulations on earth? If they go into a commercial building, like take a mall or so, another place. And the other thing was little houses.
Little houses?
Little houses.
Yeah, they're little. Yeah, I know what you mean.
Right.
You're in the paper all the time.
Right. Right, and it's a lot of other things, but I just throw it out there because I know there's a lot of talk about the little houses.
Come up with some.
Are they, are they RVs or are they really houses?
No, they're really houses and some of them are really ugly.
Really, it's not easy to come up with a calling point, you know, the next meeting. Okay.
You need motion on table.
I'll see that again.
Thank you, Scott.